They were on Facebook.
Yeah.
Do we have to have it though or like?
Do you need some kind of outbound signal?
Is YouTube working? I'm gonna say, can I just put on Facebook Live and video it just so we're at least answered?
No, I believe we've really published that.
Oh.
I'll stay in line if I can.
I think it's good enough. Uh, phone and video. But we would better.
We did work in the channel.
Oh, we haven't worked.
Everything.
Yes, we did for you.
Not our channel, not our channel right now.
Yeah, because the other time we were making it for.
You know, we're gonna have any problem with your call.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, you should do something. Wow. That's really good. I don't know. I can't get my channel right now.
Yeah, because the other time we were making it for.
You know, it's probably two weeks. You know, we're gonna have any problem with your call.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, you should do something. Wow. That's really good. I don't know. I can't get my channel right now. It's like, I don't know. I'm gonna go. Somebody else will cover what I'm sure. Y'all will tomorrow night. You're right. You're right. You're right. You're right.
I can't get my.
I'm flying a lot of stuff. I got.
Forty thousand.
I'm flying some planes on vacation, so I'm flying everywhere.
You know, we didn't have this problem when Marty was running the camera.
We're here. It works.
Can it work?
I'm watching now. Rather than having to do it. We're ready now?
Okay, everybody ready? All the September 21st, 2020 Belvedere City Council Regular Meeting to order, the clerk will call a roll.
Rivelo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Full house, thank you, everybody. Would you please stand with Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. May we serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us the strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. In your holy name we pray, amen. Welcome, everyone. Now that the excitement's over, for public comment this evening, Mr. Justin Lynch would like to speak on the matter of police referring to his rights as stupid games. Mr. Lynch, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak.
Last month, I was stopped by Boone County Sheriff's Department. The stop itself, at first, when it was going okay, I can't stress the fact that I was more than cordial to this officer. At the end of the stop, however, because I wanted to invoke my rights, and I could tell that he was not accustomed at all to someone invoking their rights, at the end of the stop, he told me if I would have stopped playing stupid games, this stop would have been done a long time ago. This is highly unacceptable. These officers need to be reminded of what they swore an oath to, and I'm your huckleberry. These officers swore an oath to the Constitution that they would uphold and defend it against foreign and domestic. And it wasn't only them that swore this oath. The military did as well. And plenty of people died for this, not just that flag, the Constitution, the law of the land. I'm upset, yes, I am. If I don't utilize and invoke my rights, all those soldiers that died, died in vain. I can't stress enough the severity of importance. Words like stupid games, you must be a sovereign citizen. Why don't you just comply like everybody else? And the infamous, we can do this the easy way, or we can do this the hard way. These are words that come out of officers' mouths across the nation when you invoke your rights thoroughly and know your rights thoroughly. No, I don't think so. You already got outrage out there. You already feeling the wrath? You gonna continue this way? I would say I'm speechless, but you hear, I have a lot to say. I could go on a lot further. I fear no man alive, not one. There's a few beasts I steer clear from, and my ex, well, she's one of them. No man, though. And a great man once said, Patrick Henry, you give me liberty, or you give me death. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda this evening, under number four, we have approval of minutes. Seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of September 8th, 2020 as presented. May I have a motion, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Rivelo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Upstein.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved. Under number five, public hearing, there is none this evening. Under number six, special messages and proclamations, we have Pamela Lopez Fettis from Growth Dimensions to address the council this evening. Ms. Fettis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me join you this evening. I just wanted to provide you with a few updates. We had started our venture entrepreneurial program with seed money through the Kaufman Foundation and a relationship that was initiated by Mayor Chamberlain and the city of Belvedere. We are delivering two classes of globally recognized training program called the Fast Track Program. I don't know if you're familiar with the Kaufman Foundation, but Mr. Kaufman believed that everyone has the fundamental right to turn an idea into economic reality regardless of who you are, where you're from, with zero barriers in the way. And so, we are very happy that we started a class. We actually have two classes, one for aspiring entrepreneurs, one for existing entrepreneurs. There's 10 people participating, and they're gonna walk away not only with a flexible and engaging program, but they'll have the enhanced knowledge on how to build, sustain, and grow their business. We're also going to supplement it with some featured speaking engagements from local entrepreneurs and a network of businesses that can help them further their efforts. We also, we charge $250 per person for this program, and we're very fortunate that we received 10 scholarships that are covering every single participant's cost. These scholarships came from Midland State's Bank, Mr. Goodwater, the Northern Illinois Building Contracts Association, German American State Bank, and Growth Dimensions. The Growth Dimensions scholarships were identified to provide it for minority applicants to support equity in our region. So, we wanted to help support our community and try to alleviate some of the issues with growing our businesses. So, we had our annual event last week, actually, it's been two weeks now, and we shared a lot of data. So, I want to share a few of these points with you. We're starting to develop a little scorecard that we'll have readily available. But one, we wanted to identify Boone County growth. So, some of it is jobs increase, in which we've had 128 since, in 2019. Our investments in 2020 include $320 million. That's for residential, non-residential, equipment, and intellectual property. Those are investments into the community. The Enterprise Zone projects, we've had 38 in 2019 with capital investments totaling $33 million. We also show our value of goods and services through our gross domestic product. In Boone County, we've had $1.9 billion of products and good services produced here. In the Rockford Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is Boone and Winnebago County, we've had $15.4 billion. We also tried to show our quality of life. A couple of areas that I wanted to highlight is our Boone County housing. In July of 2020, we've had, there's, were 90 homes sold, and that, the average cost for a home was over almost $209,000. Also, our education is another point of quality of life, and we've, currently, we have over 87% of Boone County residents with a high school diploma or better, which is a good number. Also, we've increased visibility to the region. Our social media, we've had, I'm sorry, 1,150 followers on social media. Our website, which we just redesigned about a year ago, has 400, I'm sorry, 46, over 4,600 unique visitors. That means for the first time, there was 4,600 that have come to our site. They come from 89 countries and 49 U.S. states. So, I thought that those were pretty substantial numbers, and we try to keep those updated every year, and we'll provide them as you would like. We also wanted to focus on some projects. We, in the last month, we've submitted about four projects. We've had two meetings, and we're continuing to put out large product, projects requests for companies in and outside the U.S. We also wanted to update you on the Rock Valley College Technology Center, which was, the Rock Valley College had purchased the ShopCo building last week. And construction is out for, out for bid. They're actually putting out the bid, it'll probably be about mid-November, construction to begin in either the end of December or early January. And the completion of all construction will be in June of next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fettis, good news.
Thank you.
Next, number, number seven, we have approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures are first. Seeking a motion to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $3,310,017.22. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Rivelo, may I have a second, please? Alderman Porter, questions or comments concerning any of the expenditures this month in general and special funds? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It's unanimous. Next, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $507,451.83. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second, please? Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Next up are committee reports and minutes of city officers. Please note that items A through H have been received and placed on file. Item I, Budget Update Report, Ms. Tobin wishes to bring you up to date on where we're standing with our budget. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to go over some highlights. I had included in your packet the 2021 revenue comparables that I've been giving you every month. I just wanted to, you to see that. The numbers are, you know, for us, starting to improve in some areas. You'll notice the, the video gaming is on there for, that was received in September, but it's from the July gaming. So, we're starting to see revenue from that again. The sales tax numbers are slightly better than they were in the previous last couple of months. Sales tax are three months in the rears. So, for example, the, the May sales tax number are actually the revenues that we receive in August. So, the September sales tax numbers that you see are actually revenues from June. So, that's when people are out buying things. So, that's a little bit of a correlation for you. You'll notice in the other spreadsheet that I gave you, I just kind of broke down the sales tax, because those are the two that concern me the most. So, you'll notice the sales tax, the regular municipal sales tax is off by about 9% right now. That number is getting better. It was closer to 10% last month, so that is coming down, which is good. And our Home Rule sales tax is at about 13%, which makes sense, because your Home Rule sales tax, there are some items that aren't included in that. Auto sales, your prescriptions, food that's purchased at a store, things like that are not charged the, the Home Rule sales tax. So, it's anticipated that those luxury, you know, that luxury items are not being purchased as much as your normal everyday goods. So, I will continue to follow these, and if anything changes, I will let you know. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for Ms. Tobin? Thank you, Becky. Appreciate you keeping up on that. Under item J, we have minutes of the Committee of the Whole of Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of September 14th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Porter, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Rivelo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It's unanimous. Next, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $507,451.83. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second, please? Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It's unanimous. Next, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $507,451.83. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second, please? Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It's unanimous. Next, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $507,451.83. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Rivelo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I said last week that I didn't understand this, you know, I told Brett. Is this just another name, or is it another group?
It's a group, it's a group that has to be established as part of our NARP process, nutrient removal process required through our MPDS permit at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it benefits the city in the fact that we join other entities that discharge into the Rock River watershed to study the Rock River as part of, coming up with the NARP to satisfy our MPDS requirements.
So, is this a new group to us, or is it a new group to everybody? It's just?
It's a new group.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
So, will this be creating a position or a job for somebody?
No, it will not. I think in the paperwork, it was mentioned that the Public Works Director would be the city's representative on this group.
Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Frank? Okay. I just remembered this one, too. There's a dues, do we have to pay dues?
Dues will, dues will be paid, and they have not determined that amount. Once all of the entities come on board and it's established, then the board of the watershed will meet and discuss what those fees will be. Again, the benefit is, the benefit is that that cost will be cheaper for all the participants. We don't have to bear that cost on ourselves, because if we don't join a watershed group, we basically have to do the study on our own. So, the EPA is looking for regional cooperation on establishing these, these watershed groups.
Alderman Brereton, have a question?
Yeah, thanks.
Snow had a question.
Thanks.
Just moments, Snow.
For the explanation. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, in, in the world of not creating a new job, it's not a new job for the city, but is there gonna be somebody hired to manage this? Or is this a no-pay thing by the board that, for the people who get elected to the board?
It's, they'll be appointed by the board, there'll be probably members. No, there's not additional staff or cost other than what we have to provide in order to provide the information required by EPA that we have to produce in order to satisfy the MPDS permit requirements.
Okay, but we're not creating a new position, but it says this board wind up, does anybody wind up getting paid as an employee of the board?
No, I believe not.
Thank you.
Alderman Brereton?
I remembered. I was gonna say, thanks for the explanation, and then I just wondered, since we don't know what the dues are, should we wait on that to, before we approve this, or?
Well, again, the dues are gonna be what the dues are gonna be, and we're gonna make the dues as economically feasible as we can for all of our members, because we don't want to pay, none of our, none of the members want to pay any more than they have to. Unfortunately, we will have to, we will have some expenses that we have to do. We have to do some sampling of the, of the river, we have to do some reporting, we have to do some work on that to determine what that, what our impacts are on the watershed, and so, that, that cost will be spread out amongst all the members.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Resolution 2020, 2020 is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, Resolution 2021, 2020. A resolution in support of pedestrian and bike path connection between the city of Belvedere and the village of Poplar Grove. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Porter, second, please.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Rivelo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I said last week that I didn't understand this, you know, I told Brett. Is this just another name, or is it another group?
It's a group, it's a group that has to be established as part of our NARP process, nutrient removal process required through our MPDS permit at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it benefits the city in the fact that we join other entities that discharge into the Rock River watershed to study the Rock River as part of, coming up with the NARP to satisfy our MPDS requirements.
So, is this a new group to us, or is it a new group to everybody? It's just?
It's a new group.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
So, will this be creating a position or a job for somebody?
No, it will not. I think in the paperwork, it was mentioned that the Public Works Director would be the city's representative on this group.
Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Frank?
Okay. I just remembered this one, too. There's a dues, do we have to pay dues?
Dues will, dues will be paid, and they have not determined that amount. Once all of the entities come on board and it's established, then the board of the watershed will meet and discuss what those fees will be. Again, the benefit is, the benefit is that that cost will be cheaper for all the participants. We don't have to bear that cost on ourselves, because if we don't join a watershed group, we basically have to do the study on our own. So, the EPA is looking for regional cooperation on establishing these, these watershed groups.
Alderman Brereton, have a question?
Yeah, thanks.
Snow had a question.
Thanks.
Just moments, Snow.
For the explanation. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, in, in the world of not creating a new job, it's not a new job for the city, but is there gonna be somebody hired to manage this? Or is this a no-pay thing by the board that, for the people who get elected to the board?
It's, they'll be appointed by the board, there'll be probably members. No, there's not additional staff or cost other than what we have to provide in order to provide the information required by EPA that we have to produce in order to satisfy the MPDS permit requirements.
Okay, but we're not creating a new position, but it says this board wind up, does anybody wind up getting paid as an employee of the board?
No, I believe not.
Thank you.
Alderman Brereton?
I remembered. I was gonna say, thanks for the explanation, and then I just wondered, since we don't know what the dues are, should we wait on that to, before we approve this, or?
Well, again, the dues are gonna be what the dues are gonna be, and we're gonna make the dues as economically feasible as we can for all of our members, because we don't want to pay, none of our, none of the members want to pay any more than they have to. Unfortunately, we will have to, we will have some expenses that we have to do. We have to do some sampling of the, of the river, we have to do some reporting, we have to do some work on that to determine what that, what our impacts are on the watershed, and so, that, that cost will be spread out amongst all the members.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
It's unanimous. Next, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $507,451.83. May I have a motion to approve these expenditures, please?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has made the motion, may I have a second, please? Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning any of these expenditures? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
A rivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item nine, Unfinished Business. Under A, we have ordinance number 42492H, a second reading. Ordinance authorizing sale of municipal parking lot, the former Manly Lot. City attorney has told me this needs to stay on the table, but he has additional info for the council. Dirty Drolli, you have the floor?
Yes, the council member a while back had asked if we could obtain a right of first refusal from the Community Building Complex Committee. I have negotiated such an agreement and had not heard back from them. I actually heard back at 10 minutes to 6 this evening that their board has now approved both the purchase agreement and the sale agreement, as well as a agreement for right of first refusal. So, I'll put that in the packets for committee next week, and the next council meeting, we can take it off the action, I'm sorry, off the table, amend the ordinance to include the right of first refusal, and then move forward with it. So, you should have that in packets on Monday night.
Thank you. Under number 10, New Business, we have ordinance 505H. This is a first reading, which, first readings are typically silent. I read them into the record for the folks that are listening or watching at home. It's an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property for the Logan Avenue Right-Away Expansion. More to come. Under B, we have Resolution 2020, 2020, a resolution approving the bylaws of the Rock River Watershed Group. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Rivelo, may I have a second, please? Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item nine, unfinished business. Under A, we have ordinance number 42492H, a second reading, ordinance authorizing sale of municipal parking lot, the former Manly Lot. City attorney has told me this needs to stay on the table, but he has additional info for the council. Dirty Drolli, you have the floor.
Yes, the council member a while back had asked if we could obtain a right of first refusal from the Community Building Complex Committee. I have negotiated such an agreement and had not heard back from them. I actually heard back at 10 minutes to six this evening that their board has now approved both the purchase agreement and the sale agreement, as well as a agreement for a right of first refusal. So, I'll put that in the packets for committee next week, and at the next council meeting, we can take it off the action, I'm sorry, off the table, amend the ordinance to include the right of first refusal, and then move forward with it. So, you should have that in packets on Monday night.
Thank you. Under number 10, new business, we have ordinance 505H. This is a first reading, which, first readings are typically silent. I read them into the record for the folks that are listening or watching at home. It's an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property for the Logan Avenue Right-Away Expansion. More to come. Under B, we have resolution 2020-2020, a resolution approving the bylaws of the Rock River Watershed Group. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I said last week that I didn't understand this. You know, I told Brett. Is this just another name, or is it another group?
It's a group, it's a group that has to be established as part of our NARP process, nutrient removal process required through our MPDS permit at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it benefits the city in the fact that we join other entities that discharge into the Rock River watershed to study the Rock River as part of, coming up with the NARP, to satisfy our MPDS requirements.
So, is this a new group to us, or is it a new group to everybody? It's just?
It's a new group.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
So, will this be creating a position or a job for somebody?
No, it will not. I think in the paperwork, it was mentioned that the Public Works Director would be the city's representative on this group.
Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Frank? Okay. I just remembered this one, too. There's a dues. Do we have to pay dues?
Dues will, dues will be paid, and they have not determined that amount. Once all of the entities come on board, and it's established, then the board of the watershed will meet and discuss what those fees will be. Again, the benefit is, the benefit is that that cost will be cheaper for all the participants. We don't have to bear that cost on ourselves, because if we don't join a watershed group, we basically have to do the study on our own. So, the EPA is looking for regional cooperation on establishing these, these watershed groups.
Alderman Brereton, have a question?
Yeah, thanks.
Snow had a question.
Thanks.
Just a moment, Snow.
For the explanation.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, in, in the world of not creating a new job, it's not a new job for the city, but is there going to be somebody hired to manage this, or is this a no-pay thing by the board that, for the people who get elected to the board?
It's, they'll be appointed by the board. There'll be probably members. No, there's not additional staff or cost other than what we have to provide in order to provide the information required by EPA that we have to produce in order to satisfy the MPDS permit requirements.
Okay, but we're not creating a new position, but it does, does the board wind up, does anybody wind up getting paid as an employee of the board?
No, I believe not.
Thank you.
Alderman Brereton?
I remembered. I was going to say, thanks for the explanation, and then I just wondered, since we don't know what the dues are, should we wait on that to, before we approve this, or?
Well, again, the dues are going to be what the dues are going to be, and we're going to make the dues as economically feasible as we can for all of our members, because we don't want to pay, none of our, none of the members want to pay any more than they have to. Unfortunately, we will have to, we will have some expenses that we have to do. We have to do some sampling of the, of the river. We have to do some reporting. We have to do some work on that to determine what that impact, what our impacts are on the watershed, and so, that, that cost will be spread out amongst all the members.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Resolution 2020-2020 is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, resolution 2021-2020, a resolution in support of pedestrian and bike path connection between the city of Belvedere and the village of Poplar Grove. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Porter, second, please.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Okay. Motion seconded by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Frank?
I think we should probably determine what we're, we're willing to donate, the amount, the dollar amount.
That would come up on a separate discussion if and when the request is made from the county. Right now, they are looking merely for a letter of support from the city for their grant application, for the grant funds that the county is applying for.
Alderman Snow?
And I guess that's part of my question is, you know, this is, they got a generic number of half a million dollars for a bike path. That seems extraordinarily high, and for us to wind up getting committed into this, and are the townships going to participate, such as Belvedere Township and/or whichever one is over that way, that bonus?
Again, the, whoever participates, as of right now, the county is the lead agency on this project. They are the ones applying for the grant, the ITEP grant, to help fund the path extension, and as far as, so they are prepared to, to absorb that cost for the local, share local match, but I could probably foresee that there will be a request going out for all the joining public agencies for participation. But again, right now, they're just merely looking for letters of support, which gives their app, grant application a higher score when they are being ranked.
We are not required to participate to make their dream come true.
And, and I guess I, I was kind of surprised that, you know, if there's any kind of matching deal going on, I, I can't imagine the county being in a position to fund anything.
That will remain to be seen.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Brereton?
So, this motion is just to show a letter of support for this bike path and doesn't commit us in any way?
Not to no funding, correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which moves us on to motions forward in the committee of the whole Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of September 14th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Porter, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I said last week that I didn't understand this. You know, I told Brett. Is this just another name, or is it another group?
It's a group, it's a group that has to be established as part of our NARP process, nutrient removal process required through our MPDS permit at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it benefits the city in the fact that we join other entities that discharge into the Rock River watershed to study the Rock River as part of, coming up with the NARP, to satisfy our MPDS requirements.
So, is this a new group to us, or is it a new group to everybody? It's just?
It's a new group.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
So, will this be creating a position or a job for somebody?
No, it will not. I think in the paperwork, it was mentioned that the Public Works Director would be the city's representative on this group.
Thanks.
Yes, Alderman Frank?
Okay. I just remembered this one, too. There's a dues. Do we have to pay dues?
Dues will, dues will be paid, and they have not determined that amount. Once all of the entities come on board, and it's established, then the board of the watershed will meet and discuss what those fees will be. But, again, the benefit is, the benefit is that that cost will be cheaper for all the participants. We don't have to bear that cost on ourselves, because if we don't join a watershed group, we basically have to do the study on our own. So, the EPA is looking for regional cooperation on establishing these, these watershed groups.
Alderman Brereton, have a question?
Uh, yeah, thanks.
Snow had a question.
Thanks.
Just a moment, Snow.
For the explanation. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, in, in the world of not creating a new job, it's not a new job for the city, but is there going to be somebody hired to manage this, or is this a no-paying by the board that, for the people who get elected to the board?
It's, they'll be appointed by the board. There'll be probably members. No, there's not additional staff or cost other than what we have to provide in order to provide the information required by EPA that we have to produce in order to satisfy the MPDS permit requirements.
Okay, but we're not creating a new position, but it does, does the board wind up, does anybody wind up getting paid as an employee of the board?
No, I believe not.
Thank you.
Alderman Brereton?
I remembered. I was going to say, thanks for the explanation, and then I just wondered, since we don't know what the dues are, should we wait on that to, before we approve this, or?
Well, again, the dues are going to be what the dues are going to be, and we're going to make the dues as economically feasible as we can for all of our members, because we don't want to pay, none of our, none of the members want to pay any more than they have to. Unfortunately, we will have to, we will have some expenses that we have to do. We have to do some sampling of the, of the river. We have to do some reporting. We have to do some work on that to determine what that impact, what our impacts are on the watershed, and so, that, that cost will be spread out amongst all the members.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Resolution 2020-2020 is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, resolution 2021-2020, a resolution in support of pedestrian and bike path connection between the city of Belvedere and the village of Poplar Grove. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Porter, second, please.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Okay. Motion seconded by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Frank?
Snow has a motion, or?
Just a moment, please, Mr. Snow. Alderman Frank?
I think we should probably determine what we're, we're willing to donate, the amount, the dollar amount.
That would come up in, on a separate discussion if and when the request is made from the county. Right now, they are looking merely for a letter of support from the city for their grant application, for the grant funds that the county is applying for.
Alderman Snow?
And I guess that's part of my question is, you know, this is, they got a generic number of half a million dollars for a bike path. That seems extraordinarily high, and for us to wind up getting committed into this, and are the townships going to participate, such as Belvedere Township and/or whichever one is over that way, that bonus?
Again, the, whoever participates, as of right now, the county is the lead agency on this project. They are the ones applying for the grant, the ITEP grant, to help fund the path extension, and as far as, so they are prepared to, to absorb that cost for the local, share local match, but I could probably foresee that there will be a request going out for all the joining public agencies for participation. But again, right now, they're just merely looking for letters of support, which gives their app, grant application a higher score when they are being ranked.
We are not required to participate to make their dream come true.
And, and I guess I, I was kind of surprised that, you know, if there's any kind of matching deal going on, I, I can't imagine the county being in a position to fund anything.
That will remain to be seen.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Brereton?
So, this motion is just to show a letter of support for this bike path and doesn't commit us in any way?
Not to no funding, correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Brereton?
Actually, do we know where this bike path idea originated from? Was it from the county board?
The path has been shown as an extension along Poplar Grove Road for that connection has been shown on the long-range plan for?
I started in 2005, and it was verbally discussed in about 2006 is when we put it on an actual map, but the idea has been out there since we were, I started. But in 2006, it became official on the map.
So, it was, it's been, it's been identified, and the latest round of ITEP put forth from the state has more funds in it than, than previous ITEPS, and they have, this, this round is a more focused round on path extensions, which is why the county felt it was a good opportunity for them to apply for the funding.
Isn't this part of the, the regional greenways?
Correct.
Correct. We, so, there was the Kishawaki Riverfront Committee Bike Path. There was the Kishawaki Riverfront Committee Bike Path, and that kind of expanded to a Boone County-wide bike path system, and then when they did the Boone County, Winnebago County Greenways Plan, they incorporated our bike path system into that plan. So, once it got put in a map, it's been reiterated in several other documents.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those?
I, Snow has a, a comment. On the flyer I got regarding the meetings for this, I, I was kind of surprised that it looks, the, the top of the flyer looks more like it's something to do with trees, not bicycle paths. Just tossing that out there. If, if we're going to promote this, somebody might want to use a bicycle for the, the logos and brochures.
We'll share that with the brochure creator, Mr. Snow. Yes, Alderman Brereton?
That's another thing regarding the two public meetings that are going to be presented on this. Does it benefit us or hurt us in any way if we were to hold off until those meetings, or does that, is that not necessary?
I don't think at this point it's, it's necessary. Again, it's just a letter, a letter of support that goes in with, along with the application, and the more letters of support that are included in an application gives that application a higher ranking score.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, the motion will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which moves us on to motions forward in the committee of the whole Building, Planning, and Zoning and Public Works of September 14th, 2020. Motion will be presented by Chairman Porter. Chairman Porter, you have the floor.
Okay, motion to approve the recommendations by the Historic Preservation Commission for the Downtown Vassad Grant Improvements in an amount of not to exceed $17,652.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Porter. Next up, we have motions of public works, which will be presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman, you now have the floor.
Motion to approve the Engineering Services Work Order from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed $9,900 to complete the wastewater treatment plant fiscal sustainability plan. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Department Line Item Number 61-5-820-6190.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item C.
Motion to approve the low bid from William Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $3,740,000 to complete the 2018 wastewater treatment improvement project contingent on the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency loan offer. This work will be paid for from the proceeds of the I E P A loan.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman?
Is it supposed to say 2018 project, or?
Yes, when this was originally put together and submitted, it was submitted to EPA for the 2018 low-interest loan program, and it got pushed back till now.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item D.
Motion to approve the low bid from Northern Illinois Service Company in the amount of $11,473 for the demolition of 407 West Madison Street. This work will be paid for from grant funds.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Snow has a question.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
The work will have to be done before the deadline for a grant funds expense, which is?
November 27th.
So, hopefully, it'll be done. We've got to get the contract signed and so forth, so hopefully, in the next 30 days or so, it should be done.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Chairman Freeman. Next up are motions of person, of finance and personnel, which will be presented by Chairman Ratcliffe. Chairman Ratcliffe, you now have the floor.
Okay. E, motion to appoint Carl Meewook of the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, and a letter informing Carl G. will be sent forthwith. Brings us to item 11, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting for this evening. Motion by Alderman Porter, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.